Six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're gonna have Mr. Brinkley is gonna lead us in the prayer as well as the pledge allegiance.
Father, thank you for another beautiful day and thank you for allowing us all to get together to conduct county business. We ask that you would be with us and guide us as we make decisions tonight for the county. You never pray? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming. Roll call, please.
Brinkley, Caddell, Hicks, Kids, Lemming, Nick Ward, Scott.
All right, next, we've got the auditor's report.
You have your usual monthly reports, you have any questions?
Shoot you an email or call you?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm good. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. We have a special session on June the 4th. Do you want me to do these separate? Or you want me to do them together? What do you think as the attorney?
I would say do them individually.
Okay, special session, June 4th, 2025, minutes of that meeting. We'll entertain a motion regarding those minutes.
Motion to approve.
All right, Caddell makes a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Scott. Anybody have anything about those? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign.
I will state that was not here.
All right, Mr. Lemming, it was same from that. Might be a good reason to do them separately. Next meeting, June 18th, the regular session. We have the minutes from that as well. Entertain a motion regarding those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes that are presented.
All right, Mr. Lemming makes a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Regarding those minutes. Not all in favor, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, under new business, Grant County Clerk Pam Harris. And I believe that rather than this being a additional appropriation, it is a transfer appropriation.
Yep, that'll work for y'all. That'll work in speaking with Angie. We thought that that might be a better, better solution. But I think you should, you received my note and my explanation. I need to transfer the $4,008.45 to help cover my one part-time employee. And you need explanation as to what's going on there or does the note?
The change, the change from the transfer, then what fund is it coming from? And you have excess funds in that?
Is that one coming from Angie, the, that equipment fund? Is that what we decided? Yeah, it's from the, from my equipment fund, my perpetuation. And that is the 1119, 44, 100, then four, I know, 000, 0001. And that's the perpetuation, perpetuation equipment fund.
Okay. Basically, you're transferring it to this fund, the part-time, 1119?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm, in my note, I added, I forgot to add a couple zeros up there, two on the end. It's the 1119, 11, 200, three zeros, then three zero one, or three zeros and one. And that's my part-time person here.
Anybody have any questions?
I guess I do have a question. I know that in your request, the budget, you asked for $7,800. And the council, I believe, approved 10% increases. So that gave you the 4960 instead of what you requested. So you did give a 10% increase. So I guess my question would be, why would we give another amount of money on top of that at this point?
Well, the, the 10% increase that for what I need for that employee would have been a little over $8,000. For this particular employee, he's, he is a full-time, part-time, if that makes sense. He is, works 20 hours a pay.
20 hours a day?
Uh huh. And so that 4960, and if you remember, well, those of you who were on here last year, I had to come back midstream also because when, the way it was explained to me that when that was approved, the part-time was approved, I, last year I didn't get the full amount I needed also. I had to come back midstream and ask to cover the rest.
24, you're saying in 24, you didn't get enough credit?
Correct. Yeah.
What's his hourly rate?
1540, I believe.
Does that sound right, 1540?
Uh huh.
Okay, 1540 and 20 hours a week?
Uh huh.
Okay.
No, 20 hours of pay.
20 hours of pay, so 10 hours a week then roughly? Okay. So you need 8,000 to cover his.
Cover the whole year.
And right now you had, okay, so you need 8,000 and we only gave you 4960. So that's 2,048, okay, all right.
Then we used him. Part of the reason why it's a little bit, I think, off kilter there also is when my election equipment room at the courthouse was taken away from me there and moved, there was a shelving unit, a closet of documents in there that needed to be taken care of. So he did work during that period of time, he worked over to help get that cleaned out. So, so that did take up some time, some pay there as well.
So you're asking to transfer out of that account up to the total of $7,800 is what you're asking, so? What is the amount you're actually asking for?
The 4845.
That's the transfer?
Right, uh huh. And I've got that in there, I've got 5,000 in there. So it's just moving it from one pocket to the other. I'm not really asking for anything more than what I have.
So Pam, as the toll, you're looking for the combination of the 4960 that you already have and then the request of 4845?
The amount, go ahead, Angie.
Okay, so I believe what she's requesting is 4,500 to part-time. And then there's $435 that need to go to FICA.
I did add the two together and, yeah, I think if it was 4960 plus the 4845, I think total is 9805.
9805 is what I get too, which is a couple thousand more than what we could have given her buffer, you know, if she had a request of 7,800.
That's not to say we didn't appreciate that extra raise last year also that, that the council afforded us.
Is there more than one perpetuation fund?
We've got one perpetuation fund, but there are different pockets within that fund. Does that make sense?
There's category.
Yeah, yeah, kind of. Is that how you'd explain it?
What do you mean? I mean, you've got a perpetuation. Oh yeah, she has supplies and equipment that are also appropriated during the budget phase.
Perpetuation.
At 1119.
Just another question, I guess in 2024, when you took his rate of pay times the hours he worked to get a total, what his salary would be if there's overtime involved? That was not enough either in '24, is that correct?
No, we had to come back midstream. Because I, I asked for enough to cover him for the year, but then that's not what was given us. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess right now what you're asking to be 8,000 will be his normal salary since you're asking another $1,800 for overtime or additional hours.
I guess, makes sense.
Which would be like 117 hours of the year.
We did the same thing last year, we transferred 200 dollars.
Okay, I guess my concern is when you see a lot more being spent in a salary account, even part-time than what you expected, the question is why? You know, why is that?
Well, part of the why is because we didn't get what we requested to get us through the year.
Yeah, I can see that up to 8,000 makes sense. Yeah, I can see, up to 8,000 makes sense because that's the normal hours he would work.
And another part of the why is the overtime that he did work to help give us some space when, when things were moved around.
So is that overtime accounted for the $1,800 increase? Or is there more overtime than just that?
There wasn't more overtime than that.
I, I think what we're trying to get at is the difference between the 7,800 that was requested and the 9,805. So if we add these two together, it's a $2,000 increase over what you have, you have requested. So I think that's part of the question, just trying to figure out why the additional 2,000 beyond the 7,800 that you're requesting.
Then that maybe with your question, he did have overtime for that period when we were trying to get caught up when that space was taken from us. And then along with the, the increase in pay that the council, the raise that last year's council gave to the part-time employees. So that might get us closer to where, I don't know if it'll completely cover all what you're asking, but get us closer to where, to an answer there. Does that make any sense?
The only question I might have too, though, would be this extra work that he did, is that something that our maintenance staff may not have been able to handle?
No, they can't. Because, because it's, because of the restrictions on us from the child support, you know, it's got confidential information in there and, yeah, we can't farm that out. It's gotta be handled right there. That's why I know they've been wanting to get my shred equipment to this building and that's one of the reasons why I can't allow that, is it all has to stay under the umbrella of the clerk's office over there. So, yeah, they, we can't allow that. That's a good question, though.
I guess I'll make this comment, I don't want to ask a question or a comment. There's kind of an elephant in the room, I think, a little bit. I know that you guys are having some conflicts over there between how you and the commissioners are getting along at this point. So I don't want to feed that fuel, that fire, okay? So if it's something legit and the hours were needed and you just didn't do it just to do it, then I'm okay with it, okay?
No, I'm not that petty.
Well, we're hearing a lot of things, so I'm just trying, I just want to address that issue.
I can imagine, I've been hearing things also that are way out there. But no, this is a conversation I think Angie would attest to that, that we've had concerning this fund for a little bit, that we were falling short in, in that fund.
I like it, so I can see the 8,000. I'd have no question about the 8,000. Above the 8,000 is the question, I guess, so.
Yeah, we did this in 2013 too.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion regarding this transfer of appropriation within the clerk's perpetuation fund.
I guarantee you, when it comes to the county's money, we're servants and I don't play silly games like that with county's money.
I appreciate that.
With the people's money.
I appreciate that, that's what concerns me.
Yes, I understand and I appreciate that.
So Mr. Brinkley?
All right, Mr. Brinkley makes a motion to approve his transfer of appropriation. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and a second by Mr. Lemming. The further discussion regarding this transfer. Comments from the public regarding this. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, Grant County Public Defender, Mr. Elliott. There he is. Welcome.
First of all, apologize, I'm a little under the weather today. I hope not to sneeze all over you all. I'm here today, we are making plans in the public defender's office to switch some roles around in the office. Mr. David Glickfield has been our problem-solving attorney, public defender for quite some time. We have, we have recently lost several members of our public defender's office. Actually, kind of started with Judge Kenworthy going to the Court of Appeals, then it was a domino effect. Bridget Faust, one of our PDs, ran for that position, as did Nathan Meeks. Nathan eventually won that position. So we lost Bridget and Nathan as a result of that election. And then Nathan has just recently appointed another one of our public defenders, Tom Lawson, to be his juvenile court referee. While that was all going on, we lost two other newer individuals, Aaron Scott and Brendan McCoy. They had returned to Fort Wayne to focus on the private practice up there. So we are two trial public defenders down currently. And we need to get some case coverage. I spoke to Mr. Glickfield about the idea of his becoming one of our trial PDs rather than a full-time problem-solving PD. He has graciously agreed to accept that and we have him taking cases in Superior Court III. His, his salary as a problem-solving PD was $55,000. His salary as a trial PD is $55,000. Now, with the problem-solving PD position, we are wanting to divide that up. And that is paid again, $55,000. We're, we're asking that David would be a half-time problem-solving PD as well as do his current trial PD. We're asking that 55,000 would be divided in half, 27.5 for David. And then we're asking for the other 27.5 to go to Sasha Glickfield. She's hit the ground running and she's doing a very nice job. And we've had discussions with the problem-solving courts and they, they have enjoyed her in court and we're, we're hoping for that to happen. So now Sasha is a trial PD, she makes 55. She has taken over the CHINs contract that Tom Lawson had for 12.5. So we'd be also asking to add 27.5 to her salary, being a half-timer, half a lawyer for the problem-solving. So the only, only changes to the salary would be David Glickfield would be receiving 55 as a trial PD and 27.5 for the problem-solving. And Sasha would also add to her salary by 27.5. Now, the reason we're doing this is as a full-time problem-solving PD, the commission down in Indianapolis did not give us credit caseloads for the problem-solving PD. So we are, we're finding a way that we're going to use Mr. Glickfield to utilize his skills greater and we're going to get a caseload. So that will help us with our numbers. We still, like I said, have two open PD positions. The council is gracious enough recently to allow us to hire our third full-time PD, which is going to help us with our numbers. Myself, Jerry Druck and Dave Payne are now full-time PDs. We've got the number up to three. Again, we talked, Joe Lewis, my president of the board, and I had talked with council members and we promised and we have delivered. So I, I feel good about that. Because we're all three full-time, we'll be able to have larger case counts. If we have anybody that we locate that may want to be a public defender, certainly I know there's a hiring freeze. And again, if we locate one, I will come before the council and make that request. Now, the other, the other part of this proposal, I think, which is good for everybody is because we're using already public defenders that are already receiving benefits, there would not be added benefits for new people. It's people that are already getting their health insurance approved, so. Any questions?
I guess one question I have, so really, right now, on this sheet that I've got, you've got three vacancies.
Yeah, and, and that's, I think, inaccurate. You know, we're not, we could talk about having 12 vacancies, we're, we can't find people, so.
Okay.
So I, I'm telling you, we, we really have two.
Okay.
I guess I'm confused now, I'm gonna try to ask a question. If I don't get a question right, I apologize, but are you asking to remove one of the vacant positions, the salary associated with that, and put it to the other two people?
No, it's.
Are you looking for an additional position then?
Not really. We're sliding the problem-solving PD into a trial position where he's, he's already making 55 as a problem-solving PD. He'll be making 55 as a trial PD. Plus, we're asking then for that, that position, the problem-solving PD position that's paying 55 to be divided in half, passed to Sasha Glickfield after Dave.
I guess I need to ask Angie this question. Angie, when it comes to the salary ordinance for his staff, is there a category for these different positions he's talking about?
No, but there are nine in the salary ordinance PD positions, regardless of what their job descriptions are.
We have nine salaries.
Unless you show me shows those nine there.
So, why? And I was just talking to David about it also. What I understand is it would narrow it down to eight PD positions, but take that one salary and divide it between the other two PD positions.
That's what I was asking.
It's the same amount of money.
It is.
Divided in half. We're still gonna have problem-solving PDs.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if you're gonna have one less vacant position, if we have one less vacant position, is what I was asking. So your staff is now eight on that list instead of nine?
Right.
That's, that's why I was trying to make sure we're clear of. So it's, it's closing one position down and making two other positions increased to make the total money the same?
Yep. David's salary and Sasha's salary would be 27.5.
Would you, if you were able to find the people to fill those vacancies, would you be doing that? Would you still be doing that change?
I would be trying to get that accomplished because every quarter we're at a numbers crunch. We're, we're understaffed and the cases.
Like, I want to ask you, if those vacancies did not exist, if you had those vacancies filled, you had your full nine, you know, complete, would you still be wanting to make the change?
I'd have to run the numbers.
And you'd have to ask for an additional, is what it boils down to. So my, I guess my question is, when you, if you're ever, ever able to find the people to fill those spots, are you gonna want to come back and fill all those spots then? And?
Well.
Even the vacancy that we're getting rid of right now?
I'll, I'll tell the council, council this, that is a possibility. And if the case filings don't go down, that's a distinct possibility. I mean, we, we, I don't know what percentage of all the criminal cases we get, but I would guess the public defender's office gets at least 85% of them.
Okay, and the other question I guess I'd have with that is, with the additional pay, is that additional hours those people are gonna be putting into the position?
Yeah, they would, they would definitely be working extra.
What do those hours look like per position?
Well, we're, each, each of the courts have different hours, each of the problem-solving courts. For instance, I typically do family recovery court, which is part of the CHINs docket. David and Sasha would not be handling those. David would be doing drug court and veterans' court as his assignment. Sasha would be doing mental health court and reentry court. I would say with the different filings they have each week and then the court attendance time, they're probably looking somewhere between six to 10 hours a week extra doing the problem solving.
Okay, by money-wise, it'd be they should be doing what they're doing now plus 50%? Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
And is six to 10 hours more a week, is that 50% of what they currently do?
Trust me.
Well, you, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Your dollars per hour are gonna go way up.
You're getting your money's worth from the trial PDs. So, I mean, I can't, I can't.
You understand a 50% increase in pay?
I understand.
There's gotta be something to justify that.
I mean, I wish I didn't have to deal with problem-solving courts. I wasn't asked, I was told I'm gonna provide coverage. Do we get any pay from the courts for it? No, we don't.
Well, obviously, we want to make the salary what it should be in a fair stance. I'm just saying, when you're looking at 50% increase in pay, is there a 50% increase in workload and hours?
I can't.
David, if I might be able to help a little bit, since I'm the one who handled it, one of the, I would guarantee you that between myself and my brother and maybe, I don't know about my niece and nephew, but we wouldn't be public defenders if it wasn't for the health insurance. So that is why you have the public defenders now as the health insurance. The salary at 55,000 is not, it's just not worth it. No one's gonna do it for 55,000 without the benefits. So in essence, what's happened is one of the nine vacancies has been slashed and been split. So now there's down to eight positions and you're not paying the health insurance anymore. So when you factor that 55, you also have to add in the benefits package to that. So in essence, you're comparing 55,000 to approximately 80,000 to 90,000, depending on the value you put on the benefits package. So you can't say it's, it's half-time and half-time. The other thing is, when I do drug court, veterans' court, I have on a weekly basis, I average about 70 to 75 clients a week that I'm dealing with.
David, you have to understand where I'm coming from, I think you probably do.
I do, and that's why.
To you, you already have the health insurance piece, so that's not an increase, you've already got that, understand. But I don't have any hours you spend and you say no one's gonna do it for 55,000 unless the health insurance is there.
I'm not talking about the regular public defender job.
Right, but what I'm saying, and you made the comment that no one's gonna do that unless they have health insurance, that is, so I go with it. And my response would be, it depends on how many hours they're putting toward it. You know, if you're like spending 10 hours a week and you're getting 55,000 a year, that's probably well worth it. If you're, but you're spending a lot more hours, then that does make it more questionable if you're an attorney.
The only, the fallacy in that argument is there are no attorneys anymore. And in the private world, you can make far more than that than doing the public defender work.
So maybe we're having to pay the extra because of supply-demand, is that what you're saying?
I mean, that's, and you must understand that as time has gone by, it's become a far more difficult job. People are far, they're, they're more demanding, they're more difficult to deal with. It's not an easy, pleasant thing to do, but people have constitutional rights and they're, they're entitled to their defense. I told Mr. Elliott, because basically what hap, what has happened is about the last month of each quarter, he has no attorney, so people are sitting without attorneys, without public defenders. So I volunteered to switch from this job to do a trial so people would have coverage and they wouldn't be, for example, sitting in jail waiting for their public attorney to be appointed because our numbers run into, because once a public defender hits their number, they can't get any more, you risk losing that 40% funding from the state. Because they very closely monitor our, the amount of cases that a public defender can take each quarter. You go over that, you jeopardize losing that 40%.
And that's what leads me to my worry, that, and I understand what you're trying, you're, you're trying to make something out of a bad situation. There aren't a whole lot of attorneys around and, and, and I see you're trying to remedy that. What worries me is going down to eight PDs now and do we have the coverage and the numbers? What worries me is going down to eight PDs now, and do we have the coverage and the numbers to go down to eight with what we are creating? Because if not, because we're paying the same amount of money and we're losing one PD. Are we gaining for those numbers in this, in, in the creation of this? Because when the numbers hit, and we can't take anymore, because we have one fewer PD, now Mr. Elliott's gonna have to come back, and he's gonna have to ask for another $55,000 on top of what he is already receiving.
I would say, you're absolutely gaining, because I am now taking a large number of cases as a trial PD, as opposed to what I did before as a problem-solving PD. So you definitely are getting more. And in essence, you're going down to eight. If everything stayed the same as far as the criminal filings, certainly one more public defender would help immensely. Because as he says, we're still, when you get to the end of the quarter, there's still a night period, it might now be a week to a few days, as opposed to a month. So one would certainly help, but as he said before, there's, I don't know of anyone on the horizon anyway who's gonna come and take it.
I mean, what worries me is, I mean, we're all familiar with what the state has done to us, the lack of funding that we are going to receive. And to come back and ask for an additional $55,000 may be a really tough sell. And that's what ultimately that I'm worried about down the road, if this does not work.
This is gonna help. David has never gotten caseload numbers. He's, again, graciously agreed to do this while we're, the plan's in process. So this is definitely gonna help us. Dave Payne going full-time is definitely gonna help us.
Will we get more in terms of dollars, reimbursement dollars, by going to this scenario? Because I know you said earlier something about that, we weren't receiving reimbursements for the problem-solving PD.
We get reimbursement from the state. The courts have, it's an unfunded mandate. They've come to me and said, we have to have coverage. Indiana Supreme Court requires a public defender in these problem-solving courts. Oh, by the way, we're not giving you any money towards that. You've gotta work it out with county council. So, but we do get 40% reimbursement, as long as we stay within our numbers.
Are any of these listed here under the public defender list? Are any of those trial, trial PDs now?
They, they all are.
They're all, but you're, but you're getting a different designation.
I, he's gonna be a trial.
Yeah, I'm a trial PD now.
Okay, so you're saying all these are though?
Yes, every one of them.
So, except David is, David's not at this point?
David is currently a problem-solving public defender that makes the same amount.
Which one? Is he the only one that's problem-solving?
Yes.
All the others are trial?
Correct.
So why do we need to increase Sasha's then?
So we have coverage for the problem-solving aspect. It's, it's too much for David to be a trial PD and have a full-time problem-solving court.
I don't know enough about the details of that to feel too good about it, I guess. I need to know more. I'm not gonna learn tonight.
Well, and by having Sasha do it, she will take some, certainly some of those cases and represent those clients. But again, it doesn't count against her caseload numbers, that they don't attribute any caseload to the problem-solving PDs, so.
I guess my only comment is, if it needs to be done to make it work properly, I'm willing to consider it. My only concern is, you know, we're bumping those positions up 50% of what they're currently making. We should make sure we get that kind of benefit out of that change, is what I'm saying, so. And I don't know that. I won't learn that tonight. I won't know the answer to that.
Well, again, if I could provide you any, any details, let me know. I will certainly do that. I think you can talk to any of David's clients, and they will tell you that he's been an advocate for them in these, in these problem-solving courts, and we want to have that continue. So this is, this is something we have to do, and we have to provide public defenders for the problem-solving courts, or they will get shut down.
Yeah, and I'm not talking quality of the service, I'm talking, I guess, quantity of the service, money. I assume the quality would continue and add extra quantity.
They, well, David has, you know, a lot of experience at it. Sasha would be new to it, but that is one of the other factors when I talk to Judge, Judge Spitzer in Circuit Court, is not only has the public defender council paid for David to go to conferences and travel, but there has been some contribution, not, not recently, but from the problem-solving court to help with travel. David has a lot of experience that we will not be able to easily replace. And you talked about supply and demand, I think that's a interesting way to look at it. If we don't make this position lucrative enough, I think we'll have people say, I don't wanna do it. It's, it's not worth my time.
First, do you think if, if we would take these remaining eight PDs, and if we could, if, if we could do another full-time PD, would that, would that help our numbers?
That would help, that would help, but I don't know anybody else currently that would wanna give up their private practice.
So, Mr. Elliott, last month, you, you had a same type of scenario where we're under a gun, we, against me, I voted no. We went through and we did it. What's different last month than this month? I feel like we're sitting in the same boat. We still have two vacancies. We still have, keep moving people to full-time, and we're still struggling to get where we need to go. I know you can't hire anybody. Was there somebody in the pipeline last month that we needed to get hired, but didn't come?
That was Dave Payne. Dave Payne went from trial PD to, now he's a full-time PD, so he will be able to take extra cases.
Mark, I can answer that. What's different is I'm now doing the trial PD job. Somebody had to do it. And I'm also doing the problem-solving court gratis right now. I've taken a full-time, I've, I've taken a full-time trial PD position so that people can continue to be represented. In essence, when I do that, then I am doing my other work, and I'm not being paid for it. Does that make sense?
It does, and, and we're still needing a person, or two people, even if we do what you're asking us.
Not, not as much as, if this happens, it will be, if the numbers stay the same, again, you gotta remember, public defender's office cannot help if there's, continues to be increases in case filing.
So you're saying numbers being, staying the same as far as court filing?
Court filing is correct.
Yes, I was trying to make sure.
This current setup should be okay.
And this is.
He may have a rosier picture than I do.
And this is, you're only asking for this, if I understand you, through this year, till we figure out if this is going to be sustainable. And you've already got the dollars.
We're, we'll be asking for this in 2026.
Budget, I understand. But to finish the year, this is where we're headed, in order to go, okay, this is what's budgeted. Right now, we got two vacancies. Technically, it's gonna save the county money, but if we can find somebody else to hire to help out, the whole situation, we would still do that. And we still have.
We'll have a better look at it to see if the three full-time PDs and switching David to trial PDs, if, if our numbers are gonna be closer to where we need to be.
But I'm just saying, as far as from the county council, we've got it budgeted. You're trying to figure out with what you've got, what you, how you can make it work, and this is what we come up with. You're willing to work more for a little bit, like maybe 125 an hour versus 300.
I have spent 35 years not wanting to be a, a trial PD, because I know the difficulty of that job. When you, in all honesty, when you become, and I'm being very candid, when you take that position, you are now at someone else's mercy. And when you're a privately paid attorney, you're not. It is, it is a different world.
Am I being unfair to you with this change?
I'm sorry.
Are we being unfair to you with this change? I mean, I don't wanna be unfair to you.
With this change? No, no, I told Mr. Elliott I am perfectly fine with this, and I will continue, the, the bigger worry is gonna be in about five years, when several of us become 65, you're gonna, you know, you might have four people who aren't even on here anymore. That's gonna be the big worry.
And we've talked about that a little bit, I think, what you're saying. We have one last name that's to tell here. Who else is gonna be around?
Yeah, I know Mr. Elliott, maybe, maybe next year, like, maybe his last year.
I may leave tomorrow.
But I, I guess the thought, should you, should there be another position under, like David Payne up there, is what we're saying, instead? Instead of what we're doing tonight, should there be something else that says a Dave Payne position?
He, he's up there as a full-time PD.
I know he is, but I mean, should we have another one up there instead of the change you're asking?
If he could find someone to do it, sure.
You would not.
At this point, no, I would not. At this point, I'm.
Yeah, but the change we're talking about, because you made the comment, there are some things you're not getting paid for. Are we being unfair to you with this change?
Right now, I am covering the problem-solving courts. I've done it for about the last three months since I started taking cases, and I've not been paid for that. I've just done it to help out, because he needs help.
That's not fair to you, obviously.
I'm, I'm.
That's why he's here tonight.
I'm, I'm litigation.
I, I have to admit, I don't know enough about those details of how those positions work, how many, how many hours you guys spend. I don't know that. That's why I have the concern, okay? If I knew that, I probably wouldn't have the concern expressing.
I can tell you, as a full-time problem-solving court, I will spend, it's an average, 10 to 15 hours a week, full-time. What I do right now, and that doesn't necessarily call all the clients' calls, all the emails I get, I don't track that. I don't, I don't keep track of that. But that is about what I will spend doing those. I can outline it for you if you want, but I have to be in court four different days a week for that. That's, I mean, I, and some of those days are two times a day, I have to be in court to do that.
And we're, we're trying to cut that in half, so David's not in court four days a week. He'd be in court less, but he's accurate on the four days a week currently.
And it, and it does balance out on the regular, it's 10 to 15 hours a week too on the regular job. Maybe a little bit more now, because I have to count the time where they come in, and I, you know, now I have appointment time also, not just court time.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Before I go on to counsel, I worked as a special deputy at the courthouse. And so, part of that is you sit in a courtroom with inmates as they're in front of attorney and the judge, and I'm amazed at how many, it doesn't, it makes perfect sense if you think about it. Most of our criminals don't have any money. So the majority of my, he said 85% are appointed a public defender because they can't afford an attorney. I'd be surprised if that number's not higher, to be honest with you. So I understand exactly what he's saying, because their work, their caseload is enormous, because it's, the people who are typically committing the crimes have no money, so they have to have a public defender. At least they're granted it.
Or they tell the judge that.
They tell the judge that, and, and they grant them a public defender. And so, I'm not trying to defend anybody or go against anything, but I understand what they're saying, because I've been there and I've seen it. And it's perfect sense to me, you just, it's just the way it is.
But the attorneys wouldn't be taking these positions, maybe they're not. They wouldn't take it unless they, in their own mind, can justify it with what they're getting paid. And if they can make more not doing this, they would do the not.
And I think the type of client that you have as a public defender is sometimes a challenge too, if you can imagine, because most of the law, I'm coming out of the jail.
You know, if there aren't enough paying defendants, then there aren't enough, you can't have attorneys that are not getting paid, so they, they do this instead of being, because at least you're getting something, not getting nothing people that can't afford to pay.
Oh, this is part of, you know, the cycle ran, we had an attorney shortage?
It's, it's not all about the money. I don't want you to think that.
It's quite a bit of the money.
You may, you may believe that, Jim, but there are good public defenders here in Grant County that do it to make the system work.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that. I hope that's the case. There is, there is money involved, though, so.
There is money involved.
People don't do anything for free normally. Dave might be exceptional.
But you're doing it for less.
I say he's been very gracious.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Doing it for less, though, as a public defender, I mean, that's, I, I've talked to a seasoned attorney in town, and, and, you know, when this comes up about public defenders and vacancies and things like that, and the, the statement was made, 80% of your time, 20% of your money. And, and that was the scenario that they gave me, and I, I said, okay, I don't, I don't really wanna do that. I don't wanna spend a lot of time.
It's another one of those 80/20 rules. I've heard of the 80/20.
That's called the wrong way.
Yeah. It's back to supply and demand. You're being demanded your time, and you don't have any supply to pay the bills.
Yeah, right, right.
Chair, one more little piece of info. The two young men who went back to Fort Wayne just told me recently, they're applying in Allen County for $90,000 a year for part-time. Yeah, I couldn't, I don't remember if there's benefits or not benefits, but I would assume there were $90,000 a year is what they're paying.
Well, they should come down, back to Grant County, because it's actually more affordable than Fort Wayne. There's actually money behind, you know, that.
Yeah, someday we'll also part of that region, Fort Wayne, to be the hub of it.
There's some talk about regionalizing.
That's gonna happen someday. Maybe after I'm gone, it's gonna happen. It's gonna happen.
Wow. Well, the chair will entertain a motion regarding this request at this time, because I think we're out of questions.
President, I'll make a motion to approve the request.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Makes the motion. Do we have a second to this motion?
Hold on just a second. Can you give an effective date? Is it effective for the next pay period?
What's the exact request in here?
It doesn't say.
It doesn't.
As soon as we get it going, that's what we're asking for. It's gonna, it's gonna help us with our numbers.
And Mr. Glickfield's been doing this job.
He may, he may tell me where to go.
The beginning of this inquiry was the 14th.
Okay, what's the 14th of this, we July? Okay.
So it makes sense to make it effective?
Yeah, so it'd be easier.
Okay, okay.
I'm good with that.
So.
Effective July 14th.
Okay, July 14th, 2025, to make this effective. So that is the motion by Mr. Scott.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Cudell. Any further discussion regarding this? Anybody from the public to make a comment?
Mr. Harker, I don't see your name on this list as a public defender. Never mind, we'll leave it alone.
All right, we have a first, then we have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries.
Working on some paying defendants somewhere. You didn't need.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, your first.
All right, next on our agenda, Grant County probation. Alyssa Stevenson.
You should have received in your packet a letter outlining our request. The night before the hiring freeze went into effect, we received a letter of resignation, so we are here asking for consideration of filling that. It also coincides with some more requirements for, there was a juvenile officer that resigned. We also, effective July 1st, I outlined some of those new requirements that are, shalls, not should or must or might or should, it's a shall. So those are requirements that our juvenile officers are now going to have to continue to, to start adding those into their responsibilities. I wondered if it would be helpful to share with you, after looking at our budget, we are estimated to be $97,200 under budget this year, and that's due to some vacancies. We filled four vacancies with zero years' experience, so there's extra savings there already, and that's if you choose to fill the current position at the current rate.
So there's only two and a half or some juvenile probation officers?
How many juveniles do we have?
Considerably less than what we used to have. That's why we have, we've reallocated them to, the rest of them to be adults, because we are being flooded with adult probationers.
Is there a state requirement on how many probation officers you have per juvenile?
Not that I'm aware of.
Or vice versa, maybe?
Or vice versa.
Yeah, exactly. I didn't know if the youth require more time and attention than adults.
They do require more, because you're dealing with a lot of multiple different factors. You've got schools, you've got families, you've got DCS a lot of times, you have service providers. All of our contracts have to be approved through certain ways, and. providers, all of our contracts have to be approved through certain ways, and those that are in placement have a lot more requirements for contacts and, and things like that, there's, there's a whole, so there, it's more time-intensive for juvenile supervision.
You break out juveniles as far as, you know, differing levels of, like, the probation, I mean, as far as?
Like low risk, moderate risk, yes.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we will, will monitor them based on their risk level as well.
You have a rough number of how many there are at each level right now?
No, but I can get that for you right now, so we would have, right now, we have, we have one and a half probation officers with this vacancy, so that's what we would be stuck with if you choose not to fill.
I guess maybe what would help the council is just to, for clarification, matter you need to, talking about how decreasing the juvenile numbers, and there's a, there's an increase in adult, so is it dropping to the point that there is no longer a need for two and a half?
No, no, so they're already overworked the way that it is at two and a half, so keep it in mind, these are the ones that are on call, they have to take the phone calls with law enforcement when juveniles are arrested, they have to do now all of these different assessments at that time, so if it's 2 o'clock in the morning, they have to do that assessment at that time. And so that's outside of their work hours, so they're, they're going to be earning a lot of comp time if you, you're talking about going down to switching that to two people being on call rather than three, that's a lot of extra added stress to, to them as well, because as they answer those phone calls, you can imagine getting a phone call, getting that information, having to do assessments at whatever hour in the morning, and then coming in and having to do that report now. So, I mean, these things are very time-sensitive, they have to turn around and have them before detention hearings, and so that window is very small for them.
So about how many juveniles do we have on active probation?
So I can get you that information, we would have some that are on active probation, you'd have some that are being deferred, you're having some that are, that are in placement, and so those are, I mean, they all have different kind of requirements, you know? So it's not as simple as like adult, we have this many people on adult supervision because you have placements that you have to take into consideration, which have their whole other requirement. We have one person doing placements, that's pretty much their whole focus, and so the other one that left was doing the ongoing supervision, so that's the piece we would miss, that we're trying to figure out, you know, that has to go somewhere.
Have you noticed any, any drastic change with, with placements on there? Are we, are we still, I mean, how many, how many juveniles are, are we placing?
So.
Has there been a change year over year to that?
It fluctuates.
Because I, I know, like, philosophy's changing like that every, you know, every so often, it's, that philosophy is changing, we try to match to what that, is what we had told that it needs to be.
Yeah, so we spend a lot of money for Grant County, not, not we, but DCS has been over budget, I think, for our youth in placements. A lot of that has changed, so when COVID hit, a lot of those numbers went down because they had to get kids out, and so it's kind of, just kind of fluctuated since then. I would say it's probably a little bit lower now than what it was prior to 2020, because we've all had to adjust to how business gets run, so you can say, oh, well, if you can get by this way, let's figure out a way to continue to do it that way. But, you know, we still are going to have kids in placement, they're still going to need services, even the kids that are in the community that need services, we still have to go through the same process of securing that, those services for them.
Chair, I'll entertain a motion regarding this request to fill this vacancy so that there would be two and a half juvenile probation officers as opposed to the one and a half.
Mr. President, I'll move to approve the request as presented.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Brinkley.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brinkley. Motion by Mr. Scott, and a second by Mr. Brinkley. Any further discussion? Further from the public, or anybody? No? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you could get some of those numbers, too, that'd be great, maybe send it all those. Also one more, like, how many we have in a detention facility, not treatment, but a detention.
So we'll get that information, again, that also fluctuates daily. I did see some of the, some of the rates are going up again, so for secured detention in some of the facilities, but I'll, so you want the number in placement, number in detention, number on supervision?
If, I might even be curious about the average that we would have, just because, you know, trying to determine even a number having to do with this project that we would have, and, you know, what's the right number?
Yeah.
We probably need to kind of have a conversation, just to be aware, I assume that the commissioners have had a conversation with you and saying, you know, maybe about size or something like that, so.
Yeah, I can get that for you.
Okay, that'd be super, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Mr. Chris Cunningham, coming up, Grant County Community Corrections.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello? So I got a couple of, need to make an amendment to the salary ordinance, and fall on my sword here, we made a mistake in the, two of the positions on the probation officer's salary schedule. I guess first I should back up and say, all these funds that we're talking about here are all grant funds, so the community corrections grant funds, or they're client fees. About 54% of our budget is client fees, so that gives you an idea. So the amendment that we're asking for, actually two, one is the salary amounts for two employees that were incorrectly entered to go to, from 77,561 to 77,828, and that's the first one. And the second part of that is, so we had appropriation approved out of grant dollars to be able to use stipends for individuals to deliver what we call in-house groups, and I could give you the research behind that, but basically, high-risk, high-need criminal offenders, you're looking at 200 hours of intensive services that they need, so, and Melissa, one of the great things that we have is in our system, you'll see probation, and you'll see community corrections, but really court services, we work hand-in-hand with probation. So the funds that we're able to use to that actually help support both the community corrections officers and probation officers deliver these curriculums, these in-house groups. And the in-house groups we use are from the change company, so they're heavily researched, heavily validated, and our staff are trained internally on those materials, they have a leader's manual that they use, and they follow diligently, or Melissa chases them around with a ruler, I'm not kidding, you should chase them around, maybe a whip, but anyway, she, she keeps them in step with the in-house groups, and so we compensate them as a stipend, if they deliver a group, and when they complete the group, they receive a stipend. We also have individuals who are coordinating those in-house groups, and also individuals who are doing coaching. We found that by doing the stipend, rather than overtime, is more valuable to them, they deliver the group, and it also makes sure that the group gets delivered. So, and Angie was, said, hey, you probably ought to have that as part of the salary ordinance, so we're asking for those changes today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, most of it's all explained in the, in the letter. So, yeah, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So this is the one then, for the high school program?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, they, they're all, and you know what, we, we've had other curriculums and stuff before, but we, it's, it's very rare to have people who are high-risk, high-need ask, what else do you have that I can take? So they've enjoyed the groups, and one of the byproducts of that too has been, since the people who are supervising them many times are delivering the groups, it builds rapport between them and the client, and so they become, the client becomes more invested, and the staff person becomes more invested in delivering, and delivering. So I think it's a win-win for everyone involved, plus you guys aren't paying for it, so that's a, that's another plus, too.
We're promoting, I'll move approval of the request. All right. Both, the two salary ordinances, or the two salaries and the stipends as well. All right, thank you, Mr. McCord. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Any further questions or discussion? Anybody from the public? Questions, comments? All right, if not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Just, can I make a comment here?
Sure.
So David Goodfield has been our reentry court public defender forever and a day, and so you can imagine somebody coming back from prison, high-risk, high-need, and they find out they have to go through a highly structured, highly organized program like reentry court, and they have to go over and see David Goodfield, and he has to explain it to them. So, and he does that on everyone, and does a great job of explaining what's being done, so when you hear about the hours that gets put in with those, he puts in a great deal of, of hours dealing with people who are very resistant, so.
See, that's different than I thought you were going, I thought it was going to be a poor client that had to go talk.
No, 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 but, you know, David, he does, he's got a great job with them, and they, and they, after, you know, just like you guys, he, he can, he can sell you on just about anything, so he's, he does a good job talking with the client, so I just wanted to share that, because since he's probably not going to be with us, I wanted to get it in now.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Central Dispatch, Kevin Hayes.
Good evening, I'm requested a transfer of $5,000 from training and education to overtime to, to answer the rest of the year, and that's for my deputy director. I'm an exempted employee and don't get any overtime.
Are you still short?
Yes, I have three openings. We have been conducting interviews weekly now, we've got, we've got a couple that are interesting to us, and we'll be with them through the process. We interviewed six yesterday, there were two in that group, so we are aggressively pursuing to get those filled.
Have you ever been fully staffed?
Uh, one day, shortly after we went live. Is that the need for the overtime, because you have vacancies in that, just having to work the hours instead? And when I took over in, in August of '21, my staff were mandated heavily to work anywhere between 60 and 70 hours a week. They were burnt out, and I have strived not to mandate my employees unless I actually have to, so Marlena and I step up and work a lot of the overtime so they don't have to. We are working with the policy board to restructure our mandate and overtime policy to make it a little bit more rewarding for the employees to step up to work, but I, we also understand that the importance of a work-home-life balance as well.
And if you're taking it out of the training education fund, does that cause a problem for you?
It, it shouldn't, no, we, we should, we should be pretty good on the training fund. A lot of our trainings that we go to are, are state-sponsored, so I don't have to pay for the training, I just got to pay for the, the hours and the travel to and from.
Okay, seems like we've been at that three for a long while, do you know about how long?
So when I, when I took over in '21, we were at 50% staffing, 50% staffing. We have slowly worked our way up through that.
You have 18 total, right? So 50%, that's nine.
We're, we're budgeted for 18, yes, sir. So, so we slowly worked through that, COVID was, was a nasty, nasty thing in our center, and then you, you had people who were, you know, had the, the stipends from, from the federal government to stay home and not work, so the workforce was, was very slim during those times, and we are just now starting to reap the benefits of those stipends wearing off, and people are now, you know, actively seeking jobs.
All right, chair, we'll entertain a motion on this request.
No worries.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lemming, makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Any further questions or comments? Anything from the public? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, I do greatly appreciate your diligence with the county's finances as a taxpayer, it means a lot, thank you.
Thank you. Next, with Grant County Commissioners, but it's not Shane Millsworth.
It is not, it's not. Good evening, gentlemen, just requesting to make some transfers to balance out a few accounts. There, unfortunately, last year, the billing for pictometry did not get paid at all, whether they didn't send us a bill or we didn't pay them, I don't know, because I wasn't here then, so no, no harm, no foul, but they have since been paid, and we have paid them for this year, so in essence, we paid a double payment this year, and that's not a small bill, it was about $30,000. So to zero out pictometry, we would take the $25,000 from copiers and printers, as we don't need that, because we've got a new contract through IT. The remaining balance of that from the animal shelter to zero out pictometry, the remaining of, after pictometry zeroed out, would be divided between supplies, promotional, and institutions to zero those out, and then the remaining would go to vehicle insurance. I understand that's a lot of transfers, please bear with me, as I am new to paying the bills for the county, and wasn't here in the budget process last year, but I'm here now and plan to get a, a good handle on knowing what we have and who we're paying, and how much we're paying, and what we're getting for those dollars, so. Any more questions?
Do we have a question? Welcome to the uniqueness of county government.
Loving it. It's different every day.
All right, we'll entertain a motion, special request. All right, Mr. Brinkley, makes a motion, second by Mr. Lemming. Any further questions or comments? Anything from the public? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Just a quick update from the commissioners, we are accepting bids to be opened on July 31st for the EMS building, so currently in, in the accepting of bids process, and Shane wanted me to share that. I'm not aware of any bids that have been submitted yet, but I know that's going with municipal civil, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the Upland Public Library Board appointment, but I didn't know if you actually got that advertised and everything properly, I didn't think so, because I thought it came to me late, and I said, well, we got to have time to advertise it, so that'll actually be on our agenda for approval in next month, is, okay. So we have that here, and I don't know if that, if you guys got that in your packet, though, okay, the person that we had, okay, all right. All right. So everybody got that? Next on the agenda, we have old business, Grant County Lit Discussion and Ordinance Review. I don't know if Mr. Glitfield was doing anything with that or presentation or.
Key is, is the ready force this event to the DLJF for review, I think. That's the right question. We probably need to make sure he lets us know that again.
Right. Exactly. Yeah. Maybe for right now, if he's out there.
He's coming in.
Oh, okay.
All right. Let's brainstorm with Mr. Cunningham.
All right. Brainstorming on how to find another couple of public defenders.
Actually ironically, we're talking about ways to expand home detention.
Oh, okay.
So what was the question? I apologize.
We are at Grant County Lit Discussion and Ordinance Review. Trying to make sure we got our ducks in the rope with that.
Yeah, I, I had compared this ordinance, which is basically just for your purview right now. And you can see the existing lit rate and what the proposed lit rate was. I think the only big change was the adding potentially of the correctional rehabilitation facility that what I'm going to call 20 cents or 0.2, which raises the rate to 2.75%. Of course, that depends on whether that project goes forward or not. And I know in a, in an email which I read from Mr. McWhorter, there was timelines outlined on there. And I think everything, and it might have been from Angie also, I think everything that was on there was correct. So really, I guess the decision, the first decision is going to be, is that 20 cents necessary? And I will also add one other comment. Based on previous discussions I had heard when we had this special meeting, I didn't hear any other changes that were going to be made other than that 20%. So I think those timelines are correct and it's just an issue of whether that, whether that project's going to be done and whether that 20 cents is necessary.
Yeah. And right now we're just waiting to make sure whether this is ready to go to the DLJF for their review and approval. That's what it boils down to.
Yeah. And I, I, I believe it is. And Jim, I'm sure you looked at it too.
It looked like it was. I mean, I'm not near the template totally, but that looks right to me.
Right, right. So, yeah, I think it's ready to be sent.
Okay.
Do we need to have an ordinance number on that when it goes to them?
Ah, yes. Well.
Because right now.
I think what I would do is whoever head to you'll send it to them. I would just say this is the proposed ordinance. We don't have an ordinance number yet because we're not exactly sure when it's going to be.
We're not approving it yet.
Yes, right.
If you want a motion, I'm ready to move that we have this submitted to the DLJF by Angie tomorrow or as soon as she can. So they're going to be getting their review period in the process.
All right. To consider. Thank you, Mr. McWhorter. You have a second to send this to the DLJF?
Second.
All right. Second by Mr. Caddell. Any questions or discussion? Anything from the public? Yes, Mr. Duke.
Good evening, gentlemen. Can't wait to even go by without the public making at least one comment through the proceedings. Otherwise you're going to may stop asking. I just, I'm not prepared to make any comments other than a couple of observations. This 0.2 that's being added or 0.2% that's being added is a tax increase. It's the second, it'll be the second one that I know of. The first one was food and beverage. Tax increase for the city of Marion that was approved at the last city council meeting. I assume that you're aware of it. If you're not, it's, it passed their reading on Tuesday night. These are the first two of probably other considerations as you look at how you make up for the shortfall of revenue because of Senate Bill 1. I just ask you to give due consideration to any of these matters of the burden that that tax increase is going to be putting on the citizens of the county that already have limits being put on their, changes happening to their discretionary funds. As I said when I testified at the public hearing at the city council meeting the other night, I don't know if it was completely heard, but I advocated for increasing the tax base of the county. Advocate for us, the county, having some economic development successes and new projects that bring new employers into the county to raise the tax base. I do not advocate for raising taxes, but increase the tax base. Perhaps the redevelopment commission that has been pursued by the county commissioners that's now in place, we'll see some fruit from that. There's chatter that there may be some things there. I would appeal to, and I know it's not your job to go out and find a new factory or a new service company or a new business to bring new employment to town, but you have relationships. Everybody in this room has relationships. You have friends from college, from previous work engagements and employments. If you know somebody that might offer potential for bringing in economic success to this county, reach out. Don't wait on the growth council. Don't wait on the development commission. Help them. I would appeal that to everybody that's in the room and anybody that is listening tonight. We need to have a lot of work done in a very short period of time to raise our tax base in this county. And it's a team effort that's really required, a community effort that's required. I offer those comments for your consideration as you go forward and looking at your consideration here in the budget. And I'll add one other thing that I meant to mention. If you have not heard, the city of Marion is there pursuing their budget discussions here in the upcoming weeks. They are looking at having to ask the individual departments for a 10% reduction in their budgets from 25 to 26 and looking at that kind of belt typing. I've told, I've mentioned to you a smaller number than that, but that's what's happening in the, in the city of Marion. Don't know what's happening over at Gass City or in any of the other communities, but I would think that everybody's thinking those things. Thank you.
Probably dovetailing on that, I guess there is actually an opportunity that the county could do a tax as well on food and beverage, much the same as the city is. But we are not pursuing that at the present time. But it is something that is out there and available. Perhaps we'll see how much pushback the city gets on that and, and how much money we might need. But it, it is an opportunity that's out there. But it's something that, again, we're, we're trying to do as much as we can without raising those taxes because that does make your community probably something more enticing or inviting to try and keep a lid on this. And this has to do with the new jail unfortunately that we're looking at. And again, we're trying to keep that cost down as much as possible. Really pushing the commissioners quite hard, I, I think, to try and keep a lid on those expenses as well. To do that is just, it's difficult. It's difficult. I, I would assume that the city wouldn't have to do that food and beverage tax if it hadn't been for Senate Bill 1.
Although it's not going to the general fund the way it sounded. It's economic development and.
Parks and recreation, something like that. Yeah, it's limited, but that way then whatever money was allocated there, then you pull it out of there.
I suppose that's what they do. Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know that.
Right. That would be my assumption. But, yeah, but thank you. Thank you for your comments. Yeah. And I think that was still on the lid. And we've got a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. McWhorter, second by Mr. Caddell on that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right. Motion carries. Next on our agenda, we've got reports. Any committee reports?
Mr. Hicks and I was at the meeting on the last Monday for the redevelopment where he was speaking though. They're looking into, you know, organizing the bylaws and things like that, structuring things up, looking into a couple of different locations. Of course, the Dana property being one. But right now it's in early stages. So that's about all I can report.
And then we also have on here, Grant County Sheriff Commissary Ledger 1125 through 63025. I think that was in here, but I didn't have a chance to review it. I'm hoping anybody reviewed it and had questions or something. We can certainly discuss those with the sheriff. And then we do have a lot of meeting dates coming up in the month of August, regular meeting Wednesday, August 13th, and then all the public hearings related to the budget on August 20th and 21st and the 27th and 28th. Do we do carions for those when we're here so much?
You make them real long if you do that.
Oh, okay.
You want to keep them short.
Okay, yeah, we do. We want to keep them shorter.
Your first one of those will.
Yes, it will be. Yes. You're, you're experienced at it. I think, yeah, I guess the three of us are going to be the rookies for that. We'll follow your lead. If nobody else has anything for the good of the cause, then I think that we are adjourned. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. Mr. Lemming makes a motion to adjourn. Second by Mr. McWhorter. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.